Your microphones are live? All right, council, could you take your seats, please? Well, that was nice of everybody, thank you. Okay, we're still missing, uh, okay. We'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Clarice Sitzer, could you please come up and give the invocation, please? Could everyone rise? Who isn't already standing?
Good evening. Let us be at an attitude of prayer. Gracious God, we thank you for this beautiful day and we thank you for the opportunity to serve in this community. I ask you to bless this council, bless all those who serve this community and serve it faithfully. We ask you also, gracious God, to bless our servicemen and women around the world as they serve where many in harm's way. We ask your blessing and protection upon them. God, remind us that your will is to be prominent in our community and that we serve all of the people in this community. May those who speak tonight be blessed and may all of those who serve in this community. We ask all of this in the blessed name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Councilman Schlecker, could you lead us in a pledge of allegiance, please?
My honor, sir. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Yep.
Councilwoman Martin?
Here.
Councilman Schlecker?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Here.
Councilwoman Simons?
Here.
Councilwoman Monkheart?
Here.
All right, at this time, we're gonna have public comment on agenda items. I'd like to just add deference to Carmen. Carmen Santiago, would you come on up, please? We'll get this one right here, because her son's sitting here in the aisle waiting.
Thank you so much for graciously allowing me to come up and ask for your approval. I'm here to represent the mother of Pedro. Pedro is a quadriplegic by birth. Currently, they live in Pueblo Bonito and they, he has equipment to exercise his muscles and all, but he doesn't have the facilities or enough room in the home to move around with his wheelchair. It's not feasible for him to go in the house with the wheelchair and move around in his room with the wheelchair. So, my project is to have a fundraiser so that we can begin getting funds together so we can build a family, a home, that will be suitable to meet his special needs. And our fundraiser will be held March 17th, if you approve of it. And it's going to be having music and entertainment. It's gonna be a family affair, a big event for the families to participate in. So, the whole community is going to be actually helping Pedro build the home.
Where is that?
Excuse me?
Where will that be?
At Riverside. Riverside Park.
March 17th? March 17th in Riverside?
March 17th, yeah. We'll be there from 10 to 7:00 and everyone is welcome. We're gonna have lots of music. We have a lot of bands donating their time so we can have this concert to help get the funds available. We'll have bluegrass music, hip-hop, rock. We have praise and worship, all types of music. So, we would like you to be able to approve it so we can move on and have this event to help Pedro.
Okay, thank you very much. And that's consent item C, correct?
Seven C.
Seven C. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got it, Pedro.
Anybody, I'm going to leave flyers outside so you can get them.
Well, your timing is impeccable. Anyone else has time, please come forward.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, distinguished council. My name is Jim Boatman and I am with the Boatman Law Firm. I represent various city citizens, including Don Kosikowski and Bob Memfield. Lest there be any confusion on the issue, I'm not a resident of the city. I'm only appearing before you on a representative capacity, as I have in the past. I'm here to speak to you on the matter number 14 subsection A on the agenda regarding the ordinance 11-04 and its enabling resolution. The culmination of the dismissal of the pending litigation, just at the time that the subject ordinance and resolution are up for review, represents an excellent opportunity for the council to have its cake and eat it too on this issue. Let me explain. As the council is aware, in June of last year, I filed a petition for declaratory relief on behalf of a group of concerned citizens. The petition sought a determination by the court as to whether ordinance 11-04 and its enabling resolution were passed lawfully under the city charter and state law. After the filing, the city spent nearly nine months and over $15,000 attacking the right of the citizens to even ask the court to rule upon the lawfulness of the ordinance and the resolution. To that end, today or tomorrow, the court will sign an order dismissing the amended petition, thereby saving for another day a determination of whether or not 11-04 and its enabling resolution were in fact passed lawfully by the city. Now, while the city's attorneys are to be congratulated for their temporary victory, one has to wonder what has been gained by the expenditure of resources solely to kick the can down the road on the core issue. Whether I win my appeal at the second DCA on the standing issue or find another petitioner who presents a less interesting standing case, there will come a time when the court will consider the lawfulness of the city's action with regard to ordinance 11-04 and the resolution. And setting aside the respective arguments, most reasonable people would agree that the existence of an unresolved lawsuit creates uncertainty as it relates to the subject ordinance. After all, if it were a foregone conclusion that the merits of my petition would not stand the court's discretion, the city would've gone ahead and had a ruling, because for the money that was spent and the time that is spent, we could've already had a court determination as to whether my clients were right or wrong. This uncertainty regarding the lawfulness of the ordinance and the continuing costs associated with the related litigation are simply not good for the citizens of this city. The only people that get anything out of this litigation are the attorneys. This uncertainty is not a minor issue, given the fact that if the ordinance and the resolution are found to be unlawful, all of the special exceptions and variances and the lawfulness of those special exceptions and variances that were provided as a function of that ordinance could be declared or held invalid. Now, having said all this, and at the outset, I indicated if I have this much more time, sir.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. The culmination of the dismissal of the case, just at the time that we're reconsidering the ordinance and resolution, is perfect. Either Audrey's a genius or there's great serendipity for the situation and for this city.
Okay.
I'm about 50/50 on what I'd vote, but the bottom line is this. If the council will just let the ordinance and resolution sunset or repeal whatever you have to do, then if you like the effect of the ordinance and resolution on the administration of special exceptions and variances, put it on a referendum, because a referendum is cheaper, less antagonistic, more certain than continuing litigation. Because, okay? And so, listen, and the upside is this. The city gets to end the lawsuit on its terms. It's dismissed, it's gone. You repeal the resolution and the ordinance, it makes moot any appeal. Litigation is done.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Boatman. We've got a lot of people tonight, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, please, come forward, next speaker. And from now on, we'll try to keep the applause and everything else down so we can go ahead and get everybody, because we've got a lot of people to go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. My name's Jeannie Watson and I live at 9590 Cedar Creek Drive in Benita Springs. I'm a member of Be Safe Benita and we're a nonprofit organization designed to represent the citizens of Benita Springs and we're residents concerned with protecting the children and residents of our communities by ensuring the safe and proper use of land near schools and residential areas. I'm a mother of three. Two of my children attend the charter school and I'm a resident of Cedar Creek. I'm very sympathetic to the needs of the less fortunate. I do quite a bit of volunteer work in the community, which I don't believe that I need to list to you, but I am very concerned about the possibility of there being a homeless shelter, drug rehab, or jail release program near a school. I firmly believe that it would put the children at increased risk. I'd be interested to see research and hear what type of need there is for a shelter in this area.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And, excuse me. However, if there is in fact a need for a shelter, then I would definitely be in favor of an ordinance being passed. I am, however, concerned that an ordinance for a shelter could be passed before there's proper public discourse, before we have a chance to have community input. And I think that there's a lot more information that needs to be gathered and research that needs to be done before we can make such an important decision. There's not enough time at meetings like this for, to address every issue and to gather information and to provide input. We'd like to ask that the city council set up some sort of community meetings. We're a small community. We would like to meet with you all to discuss this. We want this to be a democratic process. We're just asking for citizen input. If the need is there, we want to take care of people in the appropriate location with the appropriate parameters in place. I believe the ordinance that we have so far that you're looking at says something about 1,000 feet, you know, distance from schools and neighborhoods. We'd like that defined more clearly, from what point to what point, property line to property line, door to door. Says there would be adequate security. We'd like a definition of adequate security. How many beds are appropriate in a location like this with a community the size of Benita Springs? Basically, there's a lot of other issues that we would like research to know that we're doing the appropriate thing and making the appropriate decision. We just don't want to rush ahead with this too quickly. And we do ask that until this happens, that the city should not allow a homeless shelter anywhere in the city until an ordinance is in place.
All right.
So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your time. I have to tell you, there's a couple of cars that may be missing when you go back out there, if I don't tell you this. There's an Ohio license plate, like anybody knows with their license plate numbers. I don't know mine, but EGE 553. I don't have a description of the car. Okay, we'll need to get a description of the car. Also, there's a Pennsylvania license plate, MEBK T00. That ought to be pretty easy. So, those cars do need to be moved or someone will move them for you to an undisclosed location, no doubt. So, be careful, think about it, and we'll get you a description here in a second, okay? Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Tom Betts. I want to thank you for the opportunity to readdress the city council on redistricting of our city, especially as it pertains to our current District One. I live in Pelican Landing and I am here representing our community. Pelican Landing Community Association resides within District One. Pelican Landing supports maintaining the current boundary lines for District One. District One boundary lines are unique in that they traverse the entire northern portion of our city from the eastern line, city boundary line across to the shores of the Gulf of Mexico on the west. Pelican Landing is privileged to own Gulf Coast beach property on Big Hickory Island, where we have been actively involved in a major effort to save our beach from serious beach erosion. The city of Benita Springs has been fully supportive of our efforts and we truly appreciate the city's support. Pelican Landing would like to maintain the strength that one focal point in our city councilman represents to PLCA's beach stabilization efforts and allow us to continue in governing our entire community within District One. Pelican Landing is comprised of 3,100 different homes and our beach park amenity ranks first among our residents as the most used amenity with over 60,000 visits per year. Boundary lines along the western portion of the city coastal lands are shared with District Three. We advocate maintaining this relationship between the two districts. The demographics of these two districts along the coastline are quite different. District Three is heavily populated as opposed to District One, where very few residents reside. District One is really an environmental haven for all of us to enjoy. By maintaining the two different districts, you have essentially established a checks and balance dimension to the governing of our coastal properties. The same is true when the city discusses coastal needs with Lee County. Two council members representing coastal needs in any of the discussions with Lee County strengthens our city's position in our estimation. Pelican Landing strongly maintains that District One boundary lines stay as they are today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Gregory Corey. I'm a resident in Cedar Creek. I live at 9481 Cedar Creek Drive. Came today to speak to you regarding the ordinance that's coming up, that you are, have on the agenda today. I have two kids myself and I'm a member of Be Safe Benita. We formed Be Safe Benita to educate the residents in our neighborhood and other citizens of other neighborhoods nearby about the proper use of land for homeless shelters. We are not against a shelter, but we are against the idea of a shelter next to a school. Not near a school, this would be next to a school, and that's what got our interest. I've been a security consultant for over 20 years and have been called in to help protect schools for both internal and external threats, and I believe a shelter in such a nearby location to a school would cause such a threat. I encourage public discussion and I think it's necessary in order to form a proper ordinance that will have all the details and necessary information to both educate our citizens and to help us provide the proper city environment that we so desire. I agree that an ordinance is needed, but further research, input, and clarification is desired. A 1,000-foot rule, I don't feel is enough distance. That needs to be looked at. Excuse me. Also, I'm concerned about what kind of security measures would be in place at such a facility and how many staff members would be there to provide security for both the residents of a shelter and the nearby area. Just in closing, I want to thank you for your time today and hope that you consider these thoughts coming up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm Jane Roberts from Imperial Harbor, 26070 Kings Road, and am a full-time resident. And this is very short and sweet. How can this happen? As a full-time resident of Imperial Harbor, I want to express my feelings on the possibility of a homeless shelter becoming a reality in my neighborhood. For most of us here in Imperial Harbor, this is our retirement home, the paradise that we are able to enjoy along with our more affluent neighbors. With the changes in the economy these last five years, we've watched our house values plummet. The majority of us have cut back wherever possible to make ends meet. To try to relocate this late in life is not an option, nor should it have to be. We have witnessed this end of Old 41 grow and prosper, the art league at the front of our community, the post office, and the successful charter school. Where is the thinking that this would be an ideal area for a homeless shelter? What possible benefit could it provide to the nearby businesses, Pueblo Bonito, the school, and the many, many residences? How would it make us better people? What lessons would we learn? What an example to set before the children in the area? What a slap in the face to all the retirees who worked long and hard for what they have? What an insult to the art league with its excellent array of classes and programs. The average person is seldom aware when zoning changes are made. Traveling the digital highway to find the facts is not easy. One has to know exactly what wording codes, et cetera, to search for. I find it unacceptable when do-gooders will go to any means necessary for their cause. I find it shameful when a city such as ours finds itself in such an awkward position, but I strongly feel it is the residents of the city who should always come first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please, next speaker.
Diana Duranty of Cedar Creek, 25580 Inlet Way Court. And I'd like to address, I have a grandchild in Spring Creek School, so we know, you know, how close to the area that is. I was handing out some flyers yesterday and someone accused me of not being charitable and that they were and so forth. I have volunteered, as has my husband, down at the St. Matthews Shelter in Naples. So, this is totally untrue. I do, I am not opposed to homeless shelters. I just do think that that parcel of land is inappropriate because of all the schools in the area, including a preschool. I also, in case you haven't noticed, I'm a senior citizen, have special concerns about seniors who are also a very vulnerable group and how that would impact us, as the lady before me had just said. I'd like an opportunity to gather more information on the complex issues of homelessness, how long ordinances in other communities have been in effect, and what the results are. The city council needs to ask themselves if Benita Springs is inviting a homeless population into our community and what impact a homeless shelter will have on the existing community as well as future development. We are just beginning the process of discovery and a homeless shelter should not be allowed anywhere in Benita Springs until there is an opportunity for gathering information, having public hearings, and developing an ordinance that would meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before we go on any further, we have a very important announcement to make here. If you would like to keep your car, go ahead. That microphone will be fine. Come on up there.
All right. I'm Captain Rudden with the Sheriff's Department.
And see if you can, go ahead and pull that right on up there. There you go.
We can't get it.
That's awkward. Go ahead, do that.
Any cars that are parked over at the post office closest to City Hall on the grass are gonna need to be moved. Most importantly, there is a black Lexus ES350, has a Florida tag on it of DHS 15.
It's him.
Yeah.
It's him.
That's probably the most important. I have several other cars here. I'll read off real quick. If you think it's yours and you parked on the grass over at the post office, please make a speedy exit. The other one's gonna be a cream-colored Lincoln Town Car. I believe it was a Michigan 20, Michigan tag of P267DL, a white Honda Fit, Florida 842 PEM, a light blue Lexus IS250, 783XUJ, and a white Silverado Chevy Pickup, Florida Sorry, keep trying to call them out like I'm doing a traffic stop.
That's right. That's right. Not yet. I would recommend, everybody, you can park on the other side of the street. I know it's dangerous getting across there, but you can park across on the other side of the street.
If, what, we have a deputy out in the parking lot that can help them get across.
The deputy will help you get across there, so if you're parked like that, go ahead.
I've got four more. A green Toyota Camry, I848CV, a Ford Flex, YAYNP27.
Go ahead. We serve justice here at City Hall.
An Audi A6, SR526, and a white Toyota. I'm not sure what he's got written there, but it's C038WN. And again, these are all gonna be the cars parked on the grass on this side, on the east side of the post office.
Yeah, we really appreciate your patience. We're gonna get through this tonight. This is just one phase of the public comments on this thing. There isn't gonna be any permanent action taken tonight, but we really do want to hear from you, so please stick around and tell us your feelings. And next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Nelson, city council members. My name is Conrad Schultz. I live at 9601 Spanish Mossway. I'm a resident of Benita Springs and I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. For the record, I'd like to thank Mayor Nelson and everyone that has had a hand in bringing this homeless shelter ordinance here before us tonight. Citizens have been concerned about proposals for large homeless shelters in our cities that would contain significant populations of jail releases, alcohol and drug abusers, and mentally challenged individuals. Certainly, we have a responsibility to take care of our own, the families, children, and individuals of Benita Springs who need a hand up. What we don't want to do is create a destination for the overflow from other cities or counties. These are not unfounded fears. They are reasonable concerns based upon careful research that our group, Concerned Citizens of Benita, have done, the tours we have taken of the St. Matthews House Shelter in East Naples, and the poor locations that the proponents continue to select. We recognize and appreciate the good work accomplished by the charitable people of the St. Matthews House and other shelters. What we worry about is the negative impacts on a smaller host community like ours, impacts which the proponents never discuss and do not even seem to recognize that they exist. So, we are grateful to you tonight for getting us to this point in time where citizen input can be considered and the safety of our families and children and the character of our community here in Benita Springs can be discussed. We also want to urge the council to study the issue of homelessness in our community to help us chart our own course and determine our own solutions based on our population and our needs. A one-size-fits-all approach to homelessness in Benita Springs is not the solution. We've been told by the Benita Community Police that they can count on one hand with fingers left over, the number of homeless encampments in Benita Springs. Veterans Advisory Council members have told us that they have never had a single inquiry regarding a homeless veteran. Shelters in cities with large chronically homeless populations and homeless encampments may serve different constituencies than those that exist in our community. The shelter in East Naples, for example, accepts as many jail releases as they do women and children and is largely an alcohol and substance abuse rehab facility. This may not be the right model for Benita Springs. We urge the council to take the time to study the needs of the homeless in our community and be certain that the solution we arrive at is the right solution for Benita Springs, independent of those who stand to receive large federal grants for building these facilities. I reserve the rest of my comments for later in the meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Don Molnar. I live at 9349 Royal Court in Benita Springs. I've been coming down here for the past 10 years. My daughter lived here for several years, sold real estate, and my wife and I thought this was a, we did think, and we know that it's a safe place to come and live, and that's where we came to retire. We bought a home in Imperial Harbor and we really like it. The problem is, is the homeless shelter that's planning on being built. I've seen many fine things that you have done in the city by redoing the roadway on the north side of Old 41, building a new park, cleaning up that area by Imperial Harbor, where it was so bad years ago. It is just fantastic. But, you know that, I'm understanding that they're supposed to build a 200-room or bed facilities. These people have to leave at 8:00. They have to look for a job. So, how many jobs are we gonna find in Benita Springs? Very few. So, they're gonna be hanging out. They're gonna be hanging out at our park, Riverside Park. They're gonna be hanging out at that nice area that's been cleaned up, the bridge going over the Imperial River, right across the street from that beautiful little restaurant that's on Wilson Avenue. They're gonna be hanging out all over in that area.
What? Carry on.
Anyway, they're gonna be hanging out all over the area. They're supposed to pay $7 a day to live there, and if they don't have that money, they're not gonna be living there. They're gonna be camping out in our areas. We feel it's unsafe for our grandchildren even to ride a bicycle if this facility comes to be in our area. And I think we should get state representatives in on this. I think that the state should, there should be a state law that prohibits any type of these facilities to be built anywhere near, is at least a mile or so, from any school or any type of facilities like this. So, that's my comment and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And next speaker, please.
Hi there.
Right ahead.
My name is Mike Maloney. I live at 9289 Lord here in Benita Springs. And you'll have to pardon me, I'm still in a bit of shock, so this is with all due respect.
That's all right. I'll be keeping an eye on you.
Yeah. Yeah, and I may be a little light on details at this point, but I'm learning as rapidly as I can. My wife and I, about three or four years ago, were looking for that piece of paradise in Sunshine State. We searched high and low. We checked, we checked online and we worked with a lot of real estate people and that. And we fell in love with Benita Springs. It's a beautiful little town. It's a beautiful little town. It has that town vibe to it. It has, you know, we, we had a clean slate, could have gone anywhere. And Benita Springs is just the place for us to be. We're very happy here. But as a smaller city, we already are looking after some of the less disadvantaged here, and that's wonderful. I mean, I've seen it. I go to Pine Street where you have your, your facilities there. I go to the gym there, and I see a lot of mentally challenged people that'll go in and they'll be working there, and you're really doing some good things. And I see some group homes spread throughout the city, and that's all good stuff. And for a small town, that's the way to go. And I guess that's the thrust of what I'm trying to say, rather than an institution. My brother is mentally challenged, and I take care of him in the summertime months, and my sister takes care of him in the winter months. And I have to tell you, Bernard was institutionalized or put in a larger facility with other like people. And finally, my area got wise and they closed it. Bernard has done so much better, so much better in the smaller environment, you know, with just a smaller number of people, and he's done very well. That's, that's on that side. We don't have large homeless problem in this small city. That is unless we import the problem. So having said that, would a larger homeless facility in a smaller town could really completely change Benita Springs? Would it? I think it, I think it would. Our concern is that Benita Springs Shelter would become a magnet. Encampments, squatters, I'm not trying to paint, you know, the most extreme picture I can, but we've seen it. Even back home, I see where there's a homeless shelter, there'll be, there'll be encampments and this kind of thing. So I just ask that maybe in a smaller town, that's not appropriate. Also, the demand, I guess, for emergency services and ambulance and 911 and these kinds of things.
I'll go ahead and ask you to sum up there. Go ahead, go ahead, sum up there. Real quick, Mike.
My question is then, you know, how could we not protect the most vulnerable? And that's not the homeless people, that's the seniors and children. And also, there's Benita, rather, Benito, Pueblo Benito right behind the property. It has a daycare there, and it has children getting in on, off and on buses that I think will need some protection as well. So that's.
Nicely done, Mike. Thank you very much. Next, next, please.
Good evening. My name is John Calabria, and I'm pleased to address you on two matters. The first is the zoning verification letter of application submitted on the 10-acre parcel between the Benita Arts Center and the Benita Springs Charter School. The applicant is requesting a broad range of land use, including social service uses that are not permitted under current Benita ordinance. The developer wants to use this land to be grandfathered under county rules which no longer apply due to the establishment of the city. We requested the council direct the community development department to deny the developer's request, and we believe that should he be granted, it would set a dangerous precedent that would prevent the city from denying future applicants. Specifically, since no land in the city is zoned for social service use, we believe that that should remain. No social services use, not only at this location, but any location in the city. The second matter is to ask the council members, why would they allow any destructive influence to come to our city? Reverend Ellison of St. Matthew's House has stated that one of the beneficiaries of their assistance is children and mothers in need of temporary assistance to help them get back on their feet. Benita currently has 29 charitable organizations, which includes the fine Benita Springs Assistance Office and 33 churches, whose charitable goal should be to assist such individuals. If these 62 charitable organizations are not assisting this population, then it would behoove the donors and members of these organizations to ask why. So we wonder who will St. Matthew's House be serving? Well, St. Matthew's House does not tell us, but according to an impartial federal report, we know that the makeup is as follows. Persons with severe mental illness, 26%. Persons with chronic substance abuse issues, 36%. Report says there are no statistics for homeless people who commit crimes while in the shelters, as this would lessen support for more homeless shelters. However, the report states that the incidence of violent crime involving individuals from homeless shelters is substantial. Therefore, 67% of shelter residents are reported to be HIV/AIDS infected, mentally ill, or have chronic substance abuse. According to the Broward County Police officials, they cannot track sex offenders. There is a law in the state of Florida that allows them to be able to use a loophole and declare themselves as transient and list as a temporary or permanent address to a shelter.
John, I'm going to ask you to go ahead and sum up, if you would, please.
Okay. Residents believe that the approval of an ordinance will not only ensure that a homeless shelter will come to Benita, but no matter how well such an ordinance is written, either in existence now in some other community or in the future, it cannot control the negative effects of such a.
Got, gotcha.
Okay?
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to be here tonight. I'm the newest, and I'm the only one with probably an agenda.
Beautiful blouse, by the way.
Oh, thank you. It's all good. It came from a shelter.
I didn't know.
So my name is Karen Drook. I live at.
Speak a little closer to the microphone.
Karen Drook. I live at 25540 Spring Tide Court. I'm a mother of six. I've become a resident of Florida here in September of 2011. So I don't have statistics, but I do have a heart, and my heart is for the children. Like I said, I have six kids, five in the military, and nine grandkids. I've advocated on a board of domestic violence back where I come from for 19, for 14 years. I've advocated for CASA and many different organizations. I know the ins and outs. I was one that went to St. Matthew's to do the walkthrough recently, and so I'm understanding what it is. I'm just asking you that this is not safe for our children, because as I have the children, I've been advocating, and I've been on the domestic board, and I know what it's like to have in-and-out traffic, and it's very hard. You're going to have to increase the police statics very much. I also have two police officers and two in the military, and they would like to move down here, but they also know that when you bring more of that in, you're going to have more of a crime rate. So I thank you for the time, and thank you for everything.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Come on forward, please. Good deal, good deal.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Nelson and honorable members of the Benita Springs City Council. My name is Chris Joyce. I live in Spanish Wells at 9050 Palmas Grandes Boulevard, and I'm here with my wife Kathy tonight. We're here tonight because we, just like all of you, really love this city. We bought our condo here in 2004, and we retired here, like many of the other folks who spoke tonight in 2009, and this is now our home. We're here because we are very concerned about the quality of life in our community. And therefore, we are strongly against item 14D in tonight's agenda, which is captioned, "Creating Standards for the Operations of Shelters for Homeless Persons, Etc." I won't read the whole thing. I'm here, and I would like to know why the city council continues to take actions which promote, facilitate, and in my opinion, encourage organizations like St. Matthew's House to set up operations for the homeless here in Benita Springs. We know from statistics that there are 62 homeless encampments in Collier County right now, and Commissioner Donna Fiala attributes these camps to the presence of St. Matthew's House there. Some of these homeless people are drug addicts, sex offenders, ex-convicts, mentally ill, those infected with HIV and AIDS, and chronic substance abusers. So I ask the council tonight, why do we want to encourage these homeless people to come They pose serious dangers to our city's most vulnerable, the children that we have here and the elderly. And I believe their presence could also hurt our economy and the impact, the positive impact of tourism in our city. In summary, we feel that these are destructive influences to our community, and therefore we ask the city council to vote down the proposed standards in Agenda Item 14D tonight, and furthermore, to take all necessary steps to prohibit any homeless shelter anywhere in Benita Springs. In summary, I want to just conclude by saying, we're here because we love our city. It's a gem, and it needs to be protected. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Hello.
Don Salter. We've met before. I just thought that I would show up here. I know that St. Matthew's House is sniffing around Benita again for a place to set up shop. Same concerns seem to be voiced by the residents of other areas in Benita. So I just beg of you, as our city council and our mayor, to do the research behind this. Make sure that if they do come to our community, that we do this in the right way. 200-bed facility is too large for Benita, period, end of story. I'm not against charity. I'm not against homeless people. You never know where you'll be in the future if you're going to be on the receiving end of charity. So please, just do your due diligence, do the research. If this is something we need, we can discuss it in a public hearing, but we can't go ahead with something this size in our community. I think it would be devastating on multiple accounts, on multiple facets. Children, same argument I made. We have children in our neighborhood. I don't have them myself, but we need to make sure that we protect the children. I'm not going to go into statistics. Everyone else has already done it. I just wanted to voice my support for Be Safe Benita, and urge you again to do the research behind this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Evening, Mayor.
Hey.
Council people. My name's Thad Stevens. I live in District 2, 10638 Wood Circle, just south of Rosemary. I'm here tonight to counsel on, or not really counsel, but to comment on the whole proposal for the St. Matthew's House. I am, first and foremost, I am for one thing as far as helping those that need help. However, me having three children, each that go to Benita Springs Charter School, and knowing that those kids walk to school or walk, or go to school and from school walking, you have the elderly that will live in that area as well, retired, and those that live here full-time. And you all, as well as the point that you have people that have to sit there from like 2:00 in the afternoon in their vehicles, waiting for school to release for parent pickup and parent drop-off. I just don't feel personally that it's a right place for that. I'm not saying that it's not needed in the place of Benita Springs. I'm not, but I'm not saying it needs to be within the incorporated Benita Springs. There is plenty of areas elsewhere that we could look at as well, that may be able to facilitate a location that would be able to help those that need to be helped. I don't like to call them homeless. I like to call them houseless, because a lot of that is not by choice. Therefore, you know, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. The economy was good five years ago. It's not so good today. Therefore, you know, many of those people by not choice were, are now houseless. Those that have made the choices, though, to be within the other confines as far as, let it be criminal activity, were dealt the raw card of being mental incompetent, or those that have the, have been fallen into drug addiction, alcohol addiction, and things. Those programs are in place in other areas that are more suited to help those individuals, the ones that have been established and therefore have the means and the abilities and the funding to do so. I believe that here in Benita, my own personal opinion is to, that we need to focus on what we've been driving to, to be the gateway to the Gulf, to be, to sit there and try to revitalize the downtown area. However, right revitalizing the downtown area is not by including a homeless shelter that's going to increase more foot traffic already in the busy Old 41 area around the convenience stores and everything, waiting for people that need to look for job or day labor. In closing, I just want to put out there that I don't think personally, one, for the safety of my kids who go to Benita Springs Charter School, and those that go to Hope Lutheran for the daycare there and other daycares around, that if you have individuals that may not be of the best caliber, that can just easily walk up to these places without added security, that where you're putting our kids at risk, and putting our kids at risk, you're putting us at risk. Thank you.
Got you. Thank you very much. Okay. I would ask everybody, I, I know you, you like hearing things that you like to hear, but we'll try to keep that down just a little bit if we could, please, and because I don't want, there may be people of contrary opinion, and we, we want them to be able to feel free to speak, too. And we want to hear all these diverse opinions, okay? Try the best you can. Andy, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
Not that I'm talking about you, all right?
I assumed you were prefacing. Thank you very much. I'll keep it brief.
Go ahead.
For the record, my name's Andy DeSalvo. I've been a taxpayer in the city for over 30 years, and I still sleep in a sterile, so. I'd like to speak to you briefly this evening on Attorney's, City Attorney's Report, Section 14, Items A and D. A being the review of the ordinance for the variances and special exceptions. You know, I've been involved heavily for the last several years in economic development, so my comments today are going to be mostly related economic development. The, by speeding up the process as you did last year, it's, it's promoted economic development, to be sure. We, we, we find that, we know that you're in a court litigation on, on the issue. I would suggest to you, contrary to what was stated earlier, and I'm not an attorney, that you stay the course, that you keep the, the ordinance in effect that you've got now. It works. It's speeding up the process. It's helped economic development, and it's showing consistency to the people out in the business world, in the community that are looking for consistency in government. So I'd strongly suggest that you keep the ordinance the way that you have it and not do anything else. You voted last year when you voted closely to review it in a year, and I think that's probably wise. But now, as you're moving forward, if you're comfortable with it, keep it. I suggest to you that it works and that you should keep it intact. The second topic is the, one that appears most everybody's here for tonight. It almost sounds like a zoning hearing, but the issue before you, I think, is just whether or not you're going to advertise the, the item to, to, to look at, an ordinance for homeless shelters. If you decide to do that, I would suggest to you that maybe, again, with processes and procedures in mind for economic development, that, that a tried and true way of doing this is to, if you think there needs to be an ordinance to regulate the operation of homeless shelters in the city, that you might give that to staff, direct staff to get involved with the Sheriff's Department, other agencies that are involved in those things, the industry that's being regulated, whoever's in that business. I've heard St. Matthew's mentioned a lot, and I think that's probably a prime focus in most people's minds. Get people that are involved in, that are going to be regulated, and get their input as well as the agencies and as well as the public. The LPA seems to be the place where that usually starts, and it trickles up. You have the public hearings, you have the public input. Even people that are opposed to a homeless shelter, I think what I've heard tonight is, some say you don't, they don't want you to move on with an ordinance to, to regulate the operation. Others have said, you need to have better input. So I would suggest to you, if you're going to advertise that, that ordinance, that you might do it with standard operating procedures to show consistency again to the public in terms of economic development. No defend, no deference to, to the fine job that Audrey has done on this and other, other jobs, but, and I'm summing up.
Yeah, good.
This is a conglomeration of bits and pieces, the ordinance that she's cut and pasted together, and she'll be the first to admit it. And, and, and as other speakers have said, it may not fit what we need in the city of Benita Springs. So I think the proper way to try to find out what may fit the people in Benita Springs is to have that public hearing process, have that venting process, probably start with the LPA and let it boil back up to you all. Let everybody have a part to participate. The, the net result of that is, from my standpoint, from economic development, it shows consistency from government. It shows that people can come into this city and know that they're always going to be dealt with fairly, in a procedural and a lawful manner. And I think that's first and utmost. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Council members. My name is Scott Duval. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Brennan, Manna, and Diamond. I'm here to talk to you today about Item 14A with regard to the ordinance. And let me, let me begin by saying, six or seven years ago, when I was hired by Brennan, Manna, and Diamond to, to place an office in southwest Florida, there was no doubt in my mind it needed to be Benita Springs because it was so business-friendly. A lot of my practice deals with representing small business owners, and so I knew Benita Springs is the place to put it. The decision you made last year, and I spoke in support of that, was a great signal to the business community that you understood some of the frustrations. People trying to put some outside seating that took six months to get approved, season was done. Somebody trying to get a variance. Somebody trying to get a variance on a sign issue, so that they could advertise their business, and that took forever. Those little frustrations, they go a long way, when you relieve those, to get people to come in. Sunday's Naples Daily News article, "Trend Continues With New Businesses Setting Up Shop In Bonita Springs." So, another article where Bonita Springs was referenced as Business Springs. That's great. Congratulations. You're doing a great job. Keep it up. I think, I think there are a lot of concerns about changing zoning, and I know the lawsuit was filed, and despite the comment earlier, I know Audrey's a genius, 100%, not 50/50. So, that being said, I would encourage you-
By the way, that's just not helpful.
I know, I know. Her head's not going to be able to fit through the door now, but-
Sorry. Go ahead.
My last comment, I would reserve to the folks behind me and outside, standing up, who are very passionate about the issues here, whether it's the ordinance, or whether it's regard to homeless shelters. They have the power, especially with this number, to draft a resolution to get that on the ballot. I would encourage them, if they're so passionate about it, to do that. You know, they have a voice. Their voice is not just at this lectern, talking to you. Their voice could be getting something on the ballot for all the voters, and I would encourage them to do that. In the meantime, as a wonderful compromise, I'd encourage you to even vote, if you're concerned about this ordinance, extending it. Vote to allow it to extend for another year, and let the people decide on a referendum, if that's what they like to do. But you'd kill some small businesses if you kill the ordinance. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time. Next, please.
Good evening. Christine Ross with the Bonita Springs Area Chamber of Commerce and the Bonita Springs Estero Economic Development Council. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here to talk about 14A and 14B. I would encourage you, after one year of success with 14A, allowing there to be special exceptions, to please continue this business-friendly process. Two years ago, we came to you as a council and asked you to invest in economic development. We've gotten our economic development efforts up and running. We have gotten tremendous press. In the last six months, you practically cannot open the paper and not see something positive about Bonita Springs. I frankly don't know why people want to tear that down and take us backwards. We have site selectors coming to this city this week. I want them to read those papers and see this good news, and to hear that from us, that this is a positive environment, where you can bring your small business here. We don't have 300, 400, 500-person businesses, just a couple of those. You want to be able to come here and open your business and be successful. Please continue. Nothing bad has happened in this past year. And as far as the sign issue goes on 14B, I would encourage you to continue to be supportive and flexible until this economy turns around. I'm not suggesting that we allow it to be a freefall. I'm all about the beautiful city that we live in, but let's continue to help our small businesses along. We're getting there. It's improving. We just need you to stay the course. You decided to go forward with economic development. Stay with me in the boat. Keep rowing forward. Nothing bad is going to happen. These are small, incremental, helpful issues that we need to stay dedicated to. Thank you so much. There are some other people that are going to be here this evening to speak to you, and I appreciate the collaboration from the staff, from you folks, and from people in the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Next, please. Come on up.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Kathy McGrath. For those who don't know me here in the audience, my husband, late husband and I bought property here in 1967. I'm a year-round resident. We lived here since 1983. And I just want to comment. I know you're not going to make a decision, but these are my personal feelings. Tonight, a lot of this is the NIMBY, not in my backyard. And that's not the way I feel about it. Bonita Springs is the tail end of Lee County, and it's inappropriate to build any kind of shelter anywhere, period, in Bonita. There are so many, Conrad Schultz and Mr. Calabrea, and everyone else had much, much better facts and figures I was going to bring out. If you want to know the true figures, go to Captain Riordan, go to the community placing. They'll tell you how many homeless there are. Go to the veterans organizations. They know. But don't listen to the grapevine. There are a lot of needy everywhere, but let's face it, anything built here, big or small, is not going to help the residents of Bonita Springs or the needy. If you build it, they will come. And believe me, the grapevine and those who know how to play the system, they will be here. It's just inappropriate for Bonita Springs. You look at Lee County, anything that is located should be further centrally located, better transportation, there are social services in the city of Fort Myers, too. I have a map here. Mr., I believe it was Mr. Calabrea or Mr. Schultz brought up the fact of all the human service agencies and organizations. The Assistance Office does a wonderful job. They all do a good job. And that's another thing I'd like to bring up. There should be a coordination with these food pantries. I realize they each want to have their own one, but there should be some kind of a clearinghouse, because there are those that are going to abuse it and go from pantry to pantry to pantry. So, anyway, I just wanted to express my feelings. I don't think Bonita Springs is the appropriate location for any facility like this, and thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, please. Come on forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
Marta, how are you doing? Good evening, everybody. My name is Florwork Carlin Lozano. I come here as a minister, and I believe in second chances, but at the same time, I believe in protecting what we have. I come as a father, that I have two kids, and they go to Bonita Charter Schools. And I am the property manager of Pueblo Bonito Duplexes, and I have there 287 kids, and some more in process. So, that means we will have more. My concern, and I don't discriminate anyone, is that you might not see their faces, but you have the opportunity to make that choice for them. They are not making that choice, but you are. And whatever you saw, you will rip. Just remember those kids, and many of the senior citizens that are next to us, the Imperial Harbor people, that they have come, and thank you for coming. Please, I'll be praying for your decision. Make it the right one. The Lord bless you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi. Sharon Curtis. I live in Imperial Harbor, and I'm coming to you tonight kind of for this perspective of community. I used to teach sociology, and one of the big goals of any society is to be responsible. And if we fail to be responsible, we lose freedoms, and we see that when people break in or they steal. And I know from former experience, I had a relative who was homeless. He ended up killing himself in his parents' home. He would break into any house he came to, because he didn't really know which home was his and which wasn't. I've had students who have been addicts, who would steal everything, including their mother's wedding band off of her as she slept. You know, I have a passion for people that are homeless. I feel for them, but this is not a good fit. And that's my issue, is responsibility for the neighbors around. You have young children. I have a lot of elderly neighbors, and they're scared. You know, people live alone. They've invested in a house here. They've trusted that the city will uphold the standard of living that they expected when they bought, and when they supported the city and came to this community. And now, they're feeling vulnerable, and they're feeling at risk. And that's a sad thing at the end of your life. Children also are extremely vulnerable, and we don't understand mental illness like we should. And I have a veteran husband who struggles, too. You know, I understand. It's very difficult, and I don't fault anyone for being without a home, or homeless, or having mental illness. I think it's like cancer or heart disease. You can't say, oh, stroke, stop, or, oh, heart attack, stop, you know? There's a problem in the body, and in the body chemistry, and in the brain, and in people's ability to function the way maybe other people can. But I think as a community, it's our responsibility to make sure you don't put vulnerable people who have trusted that where they're living is safe, and a school that's invested in a location, and then put them at risk by putting an element there that we can't always depend on for good decisions. And it's not their fault. I'm not saying it's their fault, just like it's not your fault if you have a heart attack or a stroke necessarily, but it's going to happen. We know it happens, and I can tell you lots of stories, but we don't have time. I'm just hoping that, you know, you can find a way to protect the people of Bonita, that there can be a win-win solution. I wish St. Matthews would think about being a responsible neighbor, a good neighbor, and find a location with more land, lots of land, so people would have space, and not feel that they have to be hanging out in somebody's backyard or in front of a business location, but they could be comfortable where they're staying, or where they're hanging out. And I heard at one time, it was a bus issue. Well, the bus maybe could go a little bit further out of its way, or make a new little bus run. But I've got to believe there's a creative solution for having all of us live peacefully together in the kingdom, and that all pieces of the puzzle can fit together without putting people at risk, and without causing distress for the elderly and the parents of children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, my name's Neil Montgomery. I'm here representing the State of Jim Burcknett and Development Associates. I'm here speaking on City Attorney, Item D. I recognize that this was the first step in the process, but I have some comments I need to put on the record. First of all, my client have a vested right to Social Services Group 3.
There you go.
The ordinance, as drafted, would inordinately burden the property, which means it would be a violation of Burt Harris. As the city well knows, because we did submit a ZVL, there is an existing contract. This would be an impairment of existing contract, which would cost the city millions. This ordinance, as drafted, would be the most restrictive in the country. This ordinance violates the Constitution because it's void for vagueness. If you read that, ordinance is so vague, no one could say there's a set standard that anyone would know what to follow. We deal with regulations all the time. I know what a 40-foot road is. I know what 12-foot lanes are. I know what time restrictions are. I know what noise restrictions are. I deal with your regulations all the time. I defy any of you to look at that ordinance and tell me what the standard is you have to meet. The standard under the law is a reasonable man would have to look at that and know exactly what's required. That's impossible. That ordinance is not legal. That ordinance is arbitrary and capricious. That ordinance violates equal protection. Statistics show that the average homeless person in the state of Florida last year was nine years old. I'm worried about the children, too, and I'm worried about private property rights.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Vince Modarelli, and I chose this area to live because I believe this is the best place in the world to live. I'm currently the Secretary for Bonita Springs Estero Economic Development Council, and I'm here to talk about the special exception ordinance, 14A. My motivation is my children. Vincent is eight, and Sophia is four. I feel that I have the opportunity to create a diverse and vibrant economy that is not dependent upon construction or tourism, the kind of economy where my children will stay and raise their families, no matter what career they choose. So, I thank you for what you did last year in speeding up the special exceptions process, and I agree with your staff recommendation that we continue this process. Thanks for all that you're doing.
Thank you, Vince. Next, please.
Don Konsekowski, pertaining to Ordinance 1104 review. The city attorney this morning in the Naples News was quoted as saying, "The current process helps small businesses that need to set up shop quickly." I ask, is there a public need for the following special exception uses to be set up more quickly in your residential neighborhood? Accessory apartments in a single-family residential neighborhood? Helicopter heli stops in a single-family residential neighborhood? Raising American alligators and venomous reptiles? Or oil and gas excavation? Some of the special exception uses listed in the C1 commercial zones, which are still erroneously indicated in our single-family subdivisions, include food and beverage service, commercial parking lot, and yes, nightclubs in your single-family residential subdivision. Do you want them to set up shop quickly in your neighborhood? The attorney went on to say, quote, "It should not be a controversial issue. When the city was just getting established, we adopted Lee County regulations, but to make all zoning decisions by ordinance was not the intention. This process saves a lot of time," end quote. The ordinance process was the intent of the charter from the very beginning. It was confirmed by members of the original Charter Committee on the record, and it was confirmed in Resolution 0017, which approved that non-ministerial actions are cases that require public hearings and include rezonings, variances, special exceptions, rehearings of zoning cases, appeals of administrative decisions, and developments of regional impact. Resolution 0017 compares a variance and a special exception with rezoning and developments of regional impact. That indicates that special exceptions and variances have a great impact to surrounding land uses, and must be handled as ordinances. The attorney continued stating, "Those who oppose the process do not differentiate between major land use decisions, which must be made by ordinance, and minor variances and special exceptions. Minor variances were already handled administratively as required under Chapter 4-268, to handle minor errors such as a house built a couple inches over the setback, or a couple inches too tall." The attorney concluded with, "It is a little surreal to me. It's as if I don't want, we don't want common sense to get in the way of a good argument," end quote. It appears that some do not want the city charter to get in the way of what some might want to get accomplished. They tried to slip the change through two years ago in the Larue zoning, but it failed. It is surreal to me that staff would offer the council their feelings, rather than supply you with a letter and spirit of the law, as printed in our charter, and as defined in our comp plan and state statutes. I ask that you repeal 1104, and that the next council meeting, a repeal of Resolution 1113, is put on the agenda. Thank you for your-
Go ahead, go ahead.
If anyone in the audience agrees with me, I think you should come up and let the council know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward. Come on. It's okay.
Hi. My name's Norm Grayjack.
Hey, Norm.
A member, and I live in Spanish Wells. Mr. Mayor, Board, one of the things I'd like you to do-
Go ahead, talk. There you go.
Sorry. One of the things I would like you to do is look at how many people are here tonight. Somebody got excited, for some reason. 14D gets people's attention. This is a place where we like to live in peace and quiet. We all like to help homeless people. We all like to help charities. I think when you look at St. Matthew's House, and what they initially started, they looked at industrial property with a railroad siding, which is very necessary in a town like Bonita Springs. Next, they picked a school area, which is relatively close. What do we do next? Pick a shopping center and put it in the center of that? Please do not pass any ordinances relative to this. This is a quiet, nice community to live, and let's keep it that way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Board.
Great, great welcome. Next, please.
My name is Marina Corey. I'm here with my husband and representatives from besafebonita.org. And I just want to kind of sum it up. I don't even have a paper in front of me. I was listening to what everybody had to say, and wanted to tell you what Be Safe Bonita stands for. We want to make sure that you guys have a democratic way, democratic process of passing the ordinance. We live in a very small city, and that's why we moved from Miami 11 years ago. We lived in Miami for 10 years, and then when our first child was born at two and a half, when she was two and a half, we moved here, because we wanted her to go to small community school. We wanted to know all your neighbors and feel safe. So, we succeeded in doing this. We love our neighborhood. We've been in Cedar Creek for 11 years. And it seems to me that it's not recent press publications and TV interviews, a lot of things were said, and it seems like we are not concerned with the Bonita, Be Safe Bonita, that we're not concerned about homeless, which is absolutely incorrect, because we are very concerned. And I was the first one, you know, the Banyan Tree, the Cafe of Life, so many times I took So many times I took lasagnas there because with, together with our girls, we were helping people there. So the only concern that we have is that it is a, we're trying to be a voice of reason, that it is a democratic process. Since we are a small community, this is where we have a chance to have public input, and that's what we're asked for. I think from the amount of people that showed up here today, you see that everybody feel very passionately about it, and that's why we organized BeSafeBenita.org. I would encourage everybody to go and sign up for our emails, because there is a very definite space where you can do that, and we'll keep you updated. We publish there not only pros but also cons, you know, people that are for it, people that are against it. So it's not a matter of being against facilities like this. It's a matter of, like you said, to have the right ordinance, because remember that zoning was passed back in 1993 for the property that is in question now. Back then, there were no, so many neighborhoods around. There was no definitely school next to it. So there are lots of, lots of parcels of land that are more suitable for this property. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Good evening. My name's John Klosterman. Just about one year ago, a previous council, after much arm twisting, voted to change the city charter to allow zoning variances and special exemptions to be approved by a simple resolution rather than the ordinance procedure required by that city charter. As a city charter requires a vote of the people to make any changes to it, this is looked on as an illegal move by that council and raises much suspicion as to the reasons behind the vote. With the simple resolution, this and future councils can, with little or no public notification, vote to allow a private restaurant to serve the public, as was done at Flippers, and with little or no public notification, possibly vote to allow a private beach club on Benita Beach. You have an opportunity to reevaluate and change that vote tonight. Please do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Rick Steinmeier. Where do I start? 14A, okay? I believe that if you had ten attorneys, you'd have ten different opinions. We have one attorney, and you believe her that you can do and change this charter. And so far, in a twelve-month period, you've helped three different individuals. Three, four, actually. At Spring Creek, two, three out of the four were over getting to drink their alcohol. So all we want is more booze, all right? Three or four businesses benefited while you changed this charter. Okay, there's forty-some thousand people in this city. Only fifty-four percent of them voted to become a city. So you're not, you know, forty-six percent of the people didn't want a city. And what comes to my mind when I think about your actions here as a city council is tyranny, opposition, and unjust government, unjust use of power or authority. You're a tyrant, one who sees sovereignty illegally, a usurper, government that exercises authority in an oppressive manner. Benita Springs government, you are guilty of all this. Return to the charter. Haste makes waste. Equal justice for all, not justice for business people.
Okay, next speaker, please.
Diane Frazine, Benita Beach Club. Two reasons I'm up here. First, I want to say that I agree completely with what Dawn Konczakowski had said about repealing the ordinance, 1104, and the Resolution 1113 imperative that you guys really give it up to the people to make that decision. Secondly, of course, we have a jam-packed agenda here, and I am so afraid that beach re-nourishment is going to get swept underneath the carpet. I'm up here to thank our councilman Steve Slotka for coming forward with a proposed ordinance or to develop an ordinance to put our line item back in the budget for, that that will always be funded, set up funded. I do, in reading through this, I question, there's two things I'd like to know. It says that you can't bind future councils, but yet the way it's proposed here, you'll see, is that by a supermajority vote, they can decide not to do it. So you're really not binding them if you did set aside a certain amount per year as a guideline to put in there. Secondly, if this does go through, which I sure hope that you all vote for it, that you go ahead. I know, Ben, you've been saying that there's a million-two in the budget in the general fund that can be used for that. That would be the first dollar amount that's put right into that line item when it is established. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Pat McCourt, former member of your esteemed group. I'm not going to repeat everything that's been said about zoning variances and special exceptions, except to remind you that the argument is not economic development. The argument is, did you as a council follow this charter, or did you not? Now, you spent a year and sixteen thousand dollars of our money on outside attorneys trying to avoid answering that question. I beg you tonight, end this nonsense. Vote it down. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Ron Pure, Taxpayer Action Group. Man, I'll tell you, it was a terrific show tonight seeing all these people show up and express themselves. I do want to encourage them to keep the flame lit. Tag, as you, well, some of you know, suffered, I don't want to say the wrath of the then-sitting council, but you guys have been interpreting the, and misinterpreting, in my opinion, and others along the way for many, many years. Taxpayer Action Group, as you know, at one time submitted a petition with several thousand signatures, and we thought what we were proposing was in the best interest of the city, and that is a taxpayer bill of rights. But that's history. That's another deal. I'd like to also compliment those that, well, I've said it already. Thank you to all those who showed up tonight. I'd like to address, I think it's A1, I think it's the first thing on your agenda tonight after the public hearing, A6, excuse me, and that is the proposed increase in salaries for the employees and their compensation. A couple of us just today took a look at the green sheet, and there wasn't enough information on there to really draw any conclusions, but the information that was on there leads us to believe that you are not making or about to make a decision based on a full deck. How many businesses and who were sampled in the private marketplace by the consulting firm to ascertain where the salaries, the wages were going to go in what is proposed? What savings, what savings, by the way, are being discussed in there? The city manager suggested that there were savings this year, and I seem to recall that this year's budget was balanced by using surplus. Now, with respect to what's been proposed as well, I think many in the audience would like to know what kind of pensions are gotten by those folks who have become vested in the city. What are the health benefits, i.e. what are the compensation packages with respect to the deductibles that folks are exposed to, and the copays compared to the private sector? Can I have some more time here tonight?
Just a bit, just sum up, please. Sum up for your word, please.
I am. What are the benefit, what are the benefit outcomes, by the way, with respect to the pensions at the end of a term? And how much does it cost us in total, not just what the city pays towards the pensions and health benefits, but what is participation with respect to the state and what they are putting into the pension fund, the Florida retirement system? So there are a lot of questions. I guess I'll be communicating with some of you folks in the future, about in the near future, and I hope you're not about to make any decisions tonight based on the information that you've received so far.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Alexandra P. Grant.
Go ahead and pull that mic down there.
Alexandra P. Grant, 11851 East Terry Street, Benita Springs. I was on, I'm just going to speak on Item 14A. I was on the original City Charter Committee 1998, 1999, when we did the charter, and there were reasons why we did what we did. Number two, I was on the local planning agency for the first four years. This was the city. And then I was a city councilman for four years, representing District Two in the city. Now, also, prior to that, I was a member of the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee. So I have both business and civic experiences. And I would like to inform you that I felt that any type of a change from an ordinance to resolution really needs to go by a referendum vote of the city, of the people in this city. We have an election coming up in November. We can put this one item on the ballot at that time. Remember, you represent forty-five thousand people in this town. Now, some of us are business people, some of us are not, but doesn't matter whether we're business people or not, you represent all forty-five thousand people. As a small business person, I support such a referendum that would be, that would make a decision to decide which way to go on this particular issue. That's where it belongs. And then let the public decide, and then you follow their decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Marty Roach.
Sure.
I live on Benita Beach. Seeing I'm a last, I'll be short.
No, you're not. There's another guy just came up on you.
Well, okay. This is in regard to Ordinance 1104. I've been staggered at how easily the concept of following the rule of law, which is a pillar of our society, has been brushed aside in the interest of political expediency. This is a classic case, in my opinion, of pragmatism versus principle, where the ends justify the means. There are proper ways listed in our city charter to accomplish what you're trying to do. Please follow the laws, repeal Ordinance 1104, and let the people decide this instead of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next person, please.
Hi, my name's Dave Robertson, and I live at 26046 Princess Lane in Benita. And I just want to point out an irony here. If putting the homeless shelter next to the dog track is not appropriate, how does it make sense to put the homeless shelter next to the school? We should not have pedophiles.
Okay, I agree. We get it.
We should not have pedophiles living next to a school.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Don Thompson. My address is 27620 Kent Road, and I'm here on Item 14A, which is the special exception and variance position. I urge the council to stay the course, and I urge that you continue permitting the process of special exceptions and variances by resolution. The council adopted a course, a strategy and a plan over a year ago, and the plan was, let's try it, let's see if it works. And guess what? It has worked. It's only been beneficial to the community. There have been no adverse impacts, and you've shown everyone that Benita is a business-friendly community. And that was what part of the intent was. I believe that the process assures a fair hearing, and it still allows businesses to go through the process in a timely and economically fair process. And again, I'd urge you to continue the process that you adopted last year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And anyone else like to speak at this time?
Good evening. My name is Patrick Van Ass. I'm here this evening as a member of the chamber. And as a day job, what I do is, I'm a land use planner, and I'm here to discuss Ordinance 1104. And I've had several colleagues come up here and basically speak in support of the ordinance. What I'd like to do is dispel maybe some misinformation. I've heard folks allege that somehow zoning is being changed by this ordinance, and we need to be very clear that this ordinance does not change zoning in any way. This ordinance addresses the public hearing process. It doesn't bifurcate or usurp the public hearing process. All special exceptions, all variances still need to go before the zoning board and then go before council. So we're not talking about staff approving special exceptions or variances. We are still going before the council. We're still going before the zoning board. I make my money by going to these hearings and representing clients. Having one additional hearing puts money in my pockets. However, I don't think it is a pro-business move on the part of council to make the process any longer or more complicated. So like my colleagues have said, I would urge you to stay the course. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time would like to speak, please come forward.
Yes, sir.
Dave Grothaus. I live in Vanderbilt Lake Subdivision here in Benita Springs. I'd like to address the ordinance 1104, and I'd like to, I'd like to say that I think we need to go back and follow Section 727 of our charter and get rid of this ordinance. I want to speak out in support of Dawn Konczakowski and numerous others that have gone up here. I urge repeal. I've listened to the three or four people that have come up and spoken in support of keeping the ordinance, and all of them have said this has helped business development immensely, economic development immensely. However, I've heard no, no, not one example of how it helped economic development. So if it's helped economic development immensely, then state the specifics. Tell us why. Tell us what it's done. What has it improved? I've eaten at Flippers before they got their variance or their special exception. I've eaten at Flippers afterwards. I saw no difference. So I would urge you to repeal it, and let's get back to our charter and follow our charter. If you want the charter changed, there's a way to do that. Number two, I also want to speak in support of the BeSafeBenita people. I think that, I think the group has made valid points up here, and I don't think we need a homeless shelter in Benita Springs. So I'd urge you to stick with that. Finally, I have an application in to be a member of the zoning board, and I'd very much appreciate each and every one of your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Hello. Hello. Could you pull that mic down for her?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Kilgannon.
Mm-hmm.
Wagon Trail, Benita Springs. Thank you. I'm here because I wanted to share with you what my experience has been in starting shelters. I participated in a shelter beginning with battered women, with homeless, and with medically disabled and psychiatrically disabled. We opened our facilities as small houses. The largest, I think, was eight people resident. And it went down from there in the mental health facility to apartments, two-bedroom apartment. Large facilities are not productive, and programming is very expensive. And without the programming, you might as well leave them on the streets, because you're trying to change behavior, give them an alternative. And that's not going to happen unless you have programming. Now, I know it passes for programming at St. Matthew's House. Believe me, that's not programming. That's very, very poor. The person who spoke with the idea of having it farther into the county is right. It has to be centralized for the activities. But I think you should think about having a small facility in each town. You know, no more than eight. I don't know what your actual ordinance is, whether you have to have no more than five that are unrelated in one, in one facility. I don't know what the Florida regs are, but I would go with that in terms of using that. Otherwise, you're going to have a zoo. Just like the person said, they're going to be out at eight o'clock in the morning and float around, and come back at six at night and float around in the buildings. And there's very little, very little participation in training or behagimod or anything like that. So I think, really, you have to look very carefully at this. I don't know who's behind you. I don't know who's behind you now. I don't know whether it's the same people. Whatever it is-
Hey?
I'm done. I'm done.
I didn't do anything.
But think about it.
Go ahead.
And as far as that ordinance is concerned, I want to go back to the way it was in terms of having the control here. I don't want it with a real quick fix.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please? Anyone else this time? Please come forward. You would think.
My name is Michael Morrison. I'm a resident of the Cedar Creek subdivision, Mayor Nelson, and members of the council. I find it interesting to see this room packed full of people and the amount of time that's being put into this, and perhaps some of it could be prevented by having adequate ordinances that make more specific what may or may not be done. We don't know tonight whether or not you can have a 35-room shelter care facility next or in your backyard, or 120-room, or a 200-room. It's apparent we need that. I've seen offered in 14 the, a proposed ordinance. I've heard council speak earlier tonight about the legalness of that ordinance, indicating that perhaps it's not legal and could subject the city itself to a lawsuit, preventing them from using lawfully their rights to their property. In my opinion, there are many provisions in that ordinance that won't pass constitutional muster. But there are many of them that will. I think it would be appropriate for that ordinance to be reviewed by the legal staff. And an adequate ordinance regulating the size, the place, the location of shelter cares should be adopted. Now, we're looking at two different things here. We're looking at licensing or regulating a business, in this case, a shelter care business. We're also talking about 14A, which is really a zoning ordinance. They're two different things. The question is, can we separate out for tonight for all these people who are here objecting to the homeless shelter being in their backyard, the NIMIs? I'm not one of them, but I am concerned about where it goes. In my opinion, it shouldn't go in anybody's backyard, especially in a high-density area. But the way the ordinance is written, it's illegal. It's unconstitutional. There are some provisions that won't withstand constitutional challenge. One of those provisions being also one that could be affected by federal funding for Housing Act funds. If you restrict the number of facilities within a two-mile period, that's pretty broad. And if you say you can't have two shelter care facilities within two miles, the federal government may look at that as an interference with the Fair Housing Act. I'm just saying there are things in this ordinance. One thing you can pass, don't put a shelter care facility, 120 rooms, 200 rooms, within 1,000 feet of the property line of a school. And don't put it adjacent to a large community, a large PUD, or whatever it might be, because you end up having what we have tonight. I just ask you to seriously consider the ordinance, draft a proper one, regulating the business of home shelter, so that we know and you know that this is done in the right area, the right place. Thank you very much.
Well done. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deborah McLean with the Banana Peel, and I'd like to speak to you about the homeless shelter. Tonight, we have heard Neil Montgomery issue a veiled threat to enact the Burt Harris Law, and the gentleman that just spoke is concerned about property rights. If it, all it is that we will lose federal funding and federal standing, I'm frankly not too impressed. I think we can afford to lose federal funding. I do not think any homeless shelters belong in the city of Benita Springs. We do have some privately operated small organizations, not organizations, people who do lease to people that are handicapped or poor. And believe me, I know what I'm talking about here. We do not need any kind of shelter that's based on AA, which is a failed rehab organization. We do not need a homeless shelter in the city of Benita Springs. That's it.
Thank you. And again, we'll save some time here. If anybody wanting to speak, go ahead. Don't be bashful, just line up right behind this gentleman right here.
I can't let you get away with that easy.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Doug Behrens. My wife and I have had a home down here in Benita Springs since 1978, and we have enjoyed it immensely. We have also been involved, and we're at, I'm sorry, we're at Benita Beach Club. So the subject I'd like to speak to you about is 12C, which is the beach re-nourishment. Prior councils, when they were engaged in this, decided to set aside funds after the residents there had funded the major re-nourishment to maintain it. And you probably know all this history, so I won't bore you with a lot of the details. But the plan back then was that all the owners would fund it initially, and it would be maintained by the state, by the county, and by the city. And toward that end, that council at that time set aside funds and put it in the budget, and as I understand it, there were maybe $200,000 or $300,000 in that. Apparently, subsequent to that, those monies were spent for other purposes. All I would like to have you do is take a look at the reasons, the rationale, and so that we're done toward that. I think that's an outstanding way to handle that issue. And maybe you can set something up to do that again, replenish those funds, or at least establish those funds for next re-nourishment. Thank you.
Good. Well done. Thank you. If there's anyone else at this time, please come forward. We miss anybody? No? All right. Good. Good, we're good to go. Take a break.
Not yet.
Not yet. Not yet. We're going to get to your item right now, so that then you can take a break. How about that? We're going to go ahead and move 14D ahead to right now. Oh, look at me. All right. Carl, let's do, you want to go ahead and just do a little bit of an introduction to this ordinance and the thought process behind it? Or Audrey, do you want to carry the ball? Or you want me to do it?
Audrey, I'll defer to Audrey to start.
All right.
Thank you. Always happy when hearing so many diverse views on one subject.
And Audrey, you're going to need to lean right into that mic.
Okay. Can everybody hear me okay?
Louder.
Turn it up.
I'm not sure I can get it any closer to my face.
It may not be on.
Is it on?
It's on?
Doesn't sound on.
Yeah.
Yes, it's on.
All right.
Okay, I'll try to talk louder, see if that helps. For the record, I'm Audrey Vance. I'm the city attorney. And we had a meeting a few weeks ago, and I want to point out that the work that you see here is not something from a few weeks ago. It started many months ago, in fact, over, almost a whole year ago, when I hired, through federal work study, by the way, so no penny, no cost to the city, I had law clerks looking into the subject matter, looking for different ordinances, looking at the federal laws applicable to homeless shelters and also other social service groups. Let's see if that's any better.
Nice.
Thank you. Okay. And so the law clerks looked into it. I have a plethora of information. But recently, I was asked to prepare a document. I worked with three planners, and that was Arlene Sheehan, who has her AICP, John Dolmer, who I believe also has that, and Jackie, do you also have that? Jackie. So we have two that we have had testified as experts in land use and planning, another planner who probably has testified, a former building official who probably has testified in other jurisdictions but not here, and a lawyer trying to figure out what the three planners were telling her. And you have a document before you, and I'm going to agree with almost everybody in the room, it is not a perfect document. It is a first draft. It does need work, and I do encourage the thought of vetting it out if city council's willing to go forward with it. However, before vetting it out, I first want to find out if city council is even interested in the subject matter. Because city council may say, you know, quit trying to work on changes, don't go forward with an ordinance. And that's what I first need for you. This is the first time you're seeing this. So I need you guys as a group to first talk, because the Florida sunshine law prohibits councils from talking individually amongst themselves. So for members of the audience, this is the first time city council can really talk about the subject together as a group, and that alone is a big thing to talk about. And then assuming you wish to go forward with an ordinance, I would suggest that we take the ordinance to maybe the local planning agency, maybe group meetings to make changes. And yes, I'm going to say there are some mistakes where I blindly put in things from other jurisdictions that I wish I hadn't. We've made a few jokes as a result of it, but we won't do that today.
Counsel, if I could, to add to what Audrey's saying there, I think that the community, what's been lacking here in the community has been that community conversation. And so guess what we just did? We just had kind of one right here, okay? There's been a lot of angst, there's been a lot of accusations, a lot of innuendos, a lot of things going on for the last four to six years as we've been through this adventure from one thing to another. And so this was a kind of a way to go ahead and actually have a conversation about more than, less the concept. Because John, and John Dolmer from Community Development, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't actually have anything that's an application before us right now. We don't actually have anything that's really pending that we have to make a decision. We don't have a decision that we really need to make right now. What has been asked for is an opinion, is an opinion. The ZVL that you've all heard about is a zoning verification, where the applicant, not the applicant, the owner of property said, hey, under the, under the current regulations, what can we do with our property? That's the only thing that I'm aware of and that staff's aware of, I think, that has happened so far. Whatever the intent of the owner, only they know that. Whatever the intent of the prospective buyer, if there is one, we don't know that. This is all we know. So in order to give you some reasonable assurance that there was a community standard, we are offering this up as a possibility. Do you want to set a community standard? Because you don't have one right now. When it comes to, when it comes to these shelters, you don't have a community standard. You don't have one. You don't have distances, you don't have numbers, you don't have everything. If, so when somebody comes along, if they have a vested interest, as the, as the attorney correctly stated, as Neil correctly stated, they have a vested interest, they're going to build when it comes to whatever that vested interest is. So the question to council right now is, are you interested in setting up some type of reasonable special uses by in which the community can have this conversation with the LPA and set up some type of community standards that's sustainable, that's legal, that's fair to everyone, and that will create an atmosphere to where if someone does decide to build one, it'll be, there'll be reasonable restrictions and reasonable things that all of you have all brought up in the past, that you don't want to see this, don't want to see that. We can all put that together in a possible manner. So council, are you interested? Before we talk about the specifics, are you interested in doing that? Janet?
Yes. I am interested. I'm fully supportive of this.
Yeah, bunch of talking to the mic, a little bit better.
Fully supportive. I'm very interested in this, because none of us have a crystal ball, and none of us can say for sure that this, that without this, that everything would be fine in our community. So I'd like to have the LPA chew on this. I'd like to see them maybe put a little bit more thought into the distances, because I've done a little research myself since reading this document, and the distances vary. They vary from 1,000 feet to 2,000 feet in communities. So I'd like to see a little bit more done on that. I would also like to see some research as to limiting the number of beds, that there needs to be that burden of proof on how we get to a formula as to how many beds would be needed in our community.
Please?
I also would like to see the mechanisms continue that allow for residents' input and education. I think that's very important. So there you go.
And before I go to the other council persons, there are all kinds of things that will need to come up within this. But this is probably not the venue for that. We're going to, we're going to allow the LPA, the local planning agency, to do their job, which is to take input from you, from staff, from everybody, from prospective people that are interested in creating these things, the people who are interested in not seeing the created. That all needs to come together in workshops that the LPA will have. And although, and council, you're welcome to have that input at that time as well. Martha, go ahead.
I'm not interested in having the LPA do this, because I think it's time-critical. I don't, you know, remember, we've worked on like things with the LPA, and I think it's been eight years on that Chapter Four. So I think because we don't, I see Ms. Montgomery out there smiling. Which, by the way, I think she confirmed that there's a contract tonight on that property. So anyhow, and I think that's about Class III Social Services, so I think she's confirmed that. I have, you know, I have something I've written, I would like to read before we're done with this conversation, but give me that time to read that, Mayor? And what about to hear, you don't want specifics right now.
It depends on-
So I'm ready to move forward.
Depends on the context, yeah. Okay, well, let me get to that. Let's hear whatever else has to say. How about that? Bill, do you have any comments?
I don't want to proceed with this ordinance at all, period. That's it.
Okay. Easy does it. Easy? Okay. And anyone else like? Here you go. Go get them, Tiger.
I think, what, are we inviting? Are we begging the question if we bring this up? So under that theory, I'm against bringing this up.
Okay. I get you. All right. Good deal. Steve? Steve or Stephen? Either one.
First of all, the citizens, for those of you who haven't heard me say this before, I'll say it again. It's your city. We don't know what you think unless you're here, so thank you for coming. I would ask that when you come to these meetings, you be careful about expressing yourself after the speakers, because if there are different opinions in the room, there's going to be boos as well as claps, so please respect the opinions of other people as well. That's just my personal opinion. I can't support the ordinance as it is. I do think we need to get it back to the LPA, go through the normal channels to make that work. But I also think it's broader than homeless. It also has to do with halfway houses and other types of organizations such as that, so I'd push it back to the LPA. I can't support the ordinance as it is.
I can either.
But you're in support of having, or of studying it, sending it to the LPA? Okay. All right. Steve?
I would be in the same position as Dr. McIntosh.
Yeah, all right. Just to let you all know, again, without, without the special use permit, there is no standard, there is no protection. And we had thought about what you just brought up there. Is this a facilitation of it? I think that there's evidence there from the people that were trying to sell the property, maybe trying to sell the property for that, don't know, that they're not liking this too much. I think that it actually, this particular ordinance is way too restrictive. Not from my own personal point of view, it's just not legal. There are some things. It's one thing to put two or three different items together from different communities, but when you paste every part of the puzzle together and they all overlap, if it translates into nothing can be built here, and I know a lot of you feel like that should be, that should be the law. I mean, a lot of you feel that way. It's illegal to do that as a community. It's illegal to do that. I mean, that's my number-one fear for this community, is that regardless of whether or not we think we should have a homeless shelter or not, when you preclude a use like that, it goes against federal law. And I'll have Audrey speak to that a little bit before we go any further with this. Audrey, would you speak on that matter so far as the preclusion of this use in the community altogether?
There's many points where it can violate federal law. I think Mr. Morrison, the citizen who spoke from Cedar Creek, was very interesting, because, and I need to go back into the Fair Housing Act, because I think the two-mile separation leads to group homes that you might have, and I did not want the intent, and that was one thing, if I may share, that I had a conversation with Councilmember Simons. With the group homes, or with, you know, the six-people-type standards, you cannot even use your zoning to prohibit that in a residential area. That's permitted by right, anywhere where residential is permitted. Okay? Which, there's the smaller, it's not a homeless shelter, folks, it's six people living together.
Speak a little bit further into the mic.
Okay. So I mean, it is something that is, within the federal scheme, governments aren't prohibited from doing things. The way that this ordinance, and again, it's a first draft, and I'm going to agree with you- you, it is too restrictive, we have a severability clause in there, and the whole purpose of the severability clause is if anything was found to be unconstitutional, you know, the rest of the ordinance could survive, so that's a very important drafting tool that I use, and I, when Councilman McIntosh made the comment as far as having some overlap and redundancies, I had the same concern with the planners, so I'm looking at them when you talked about that, because I said, somebody's got to help so that we make sure we get that out. I liken this ordinance to similar to what you see in the state government dealing with hospitals, having a certificate of need, so that, or certificate of necessity, which you see in hospitals, where they have to justify the number of beds necessary for their particular use, to make sure that it fits within the community. This is not the first time that we've looked at a regulatory ordinance, so I would, you know, you know, we have had other regulatory ordinances that do have some distance separations, and that's in the form of jet skis, we have that for personal watercraft, and we also have that for adult entertainment, I mean, and we also have it for alcohol and consumption of alcohol near churches. So these are not brand-new concepts to council. The distances are something the planners need to look at to determine what's the appropriate distance, and we had had conversations, but it doesn't mean that our conversations are conclusive or final on it. This was a starting point or jumping point, and like I said, with, especially with Councilman Longcard and Councilman Simmons, I want to make sure that you guys even want me to go into the jumping point before even, you know, making changes or asking for some input, because this does, I did put dates here, but it needs changes. Finally, when Councilmember Simons said, "No LPA," the reason I think Ms. Montgomery was laughing is because if anything in here is a land use, there is a state statute that requires them to review the document for consistency with the comp plan. It doesn't mean that they have to be the author of it, but it does mean that they, you know, have to have a review, and I think that will be something that we would want to do as an abundance of caution to help protect the ordinance. And Judge Pacht did a ruling on personal watercraft a long time ago, and there's a reason I have that method for madness, because of that. If you want, I need to get a kind of a consensus of council, from what I hear, we have something that, other than two of you, you want to look further into it, and I think that's...
Well, I'm going to prolong this a little bit more, all right? Just for the, while we got you here, okay? This is a great time to get some things clarified, possibly clarified, maybe not believed, but clarified. So, so far as, is the, the ability of a piece of property, if a piece of property within this community is found, and this question's been floating around there, and I know that people are concerned about that, if a piece of property was, you know, whether it was in 1990 or 1998 or whatever, if they had a vesting underneath a planned commercial development or whatever it was, that said they had this particular use, is there anything that, I mean, we've had a lot of calls from people, "Don't let that happen." Is there anything legally that the city can do to do, to do that? Is there, is there a process other than buying the property?
And that's why I'd say read your charter, because in this case, the charter says that anything that was adopted by Lee County belongs to us. We get it with the pimples and wards, or with the vesting that's on the property, and that's in the charter, that is something, so I mean, we cannot ignore something that's already been zoned, and in that case, if a piece of property is zoned where it permits social services, Group Three, as a matter of right, then at that point, you have ability to place something on the property, subject to design standards, subject to maybe capacity based on traffic, all the things we have in development standards ordinance for anything else out there, gopher tortoises, all the other regulations, whatever applies to any building anywhere, but we don't have anything on the books that would regulate actually, how do they implement social services? Do they need to have an operation plan? Do they need to coordinate with the sheriff's office? Do they need to have things looked at and reviewed and vetted, and what is found necessary by the community? Do they have to have community outreach meetings?
So the ZVL is not a process, it's nothing we vote on, it's, it's something that if it was found that this was approved, how many ever years ago, it's not a grandfathering, it just exists. Is that, is, John, is that true? Yes? John Dolmer, I'm pulling everybody into the fray here. Just want to get some things clear.
Yes, sir. This particular property that we've had a request for zoning verification letter...
A little bit louder.
It was rezoned to a planned development in 1993 by Lee County. As all planned developments have, this planned development has a schedule of uses that were approved. When an application comes forward, an applicant or property owner will include a list of uses that they want to have permitted on that site. Staff reviews that list, it's then presented to the zoning board or hearing examiner at Lee County, and then finally voted upon by the county commission. That was the process that the Burnwood IPD/CPD followed, and social services Group Three was one of those uses that was included on that schedule.
And so in, in the letter, when, and once the letter is sent out, it'll just say that, right? What was...
Well, Ms. Montgomery asked a lot of questions.
Well, basically, basically.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Counsel, do you have any questions? Yes?
And it specifically said homeless shelters are permitted.
It says social service Group Three.
Easy, easy, easy. Go ahead.
It says social service Group Three.
And contained therein?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay? Yes?
Yeah, and, and Group Three social services also contains group homes.
I believe...
A group home, yeah, I thought you said, John, that a group home was social services Group Three.
I, I believe you're correct, but I, because I remember we had the conversation, but I just want to take a look at it to...
Please do.
But, anyway, go ahead.
John or Audrey, whichever, simply put, without an ordinance regarding social services shelters, they can go ahead and build...
Whatever they want.
Whatever they want. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Within, within the spectrum of social services.
Yes, sir, there, there's development standards that were included within the planned development in terms of setbacks, height, those issues, and then there are commercial building standards that we have for architectural design that would have to be followed, and, and for this particular property, there is Property Owners Association that would also review any of their designs.
So therefore, on my second part of that, given the ordinance that is here, which we may, may not feel that it is too restrictive, it would behoove us, if we're concerned about the type of social service home or whatever, that we create an ordinance.
If there is interest in having any type of controls above and beyond what you currently have in the land development code, which is minimal, yes, sir. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions?
I don't have a question, just want to make a statement.
Okay, all right, make your statement. And, oh, I'm sorry, Bill, you, you got a question first, now I'll come right back to you with them.
If in fact, we have our own, we became a city, why do we still have within our zone, in our, our future land use, why do, why do, why haven't we done everything line by line and changed as a council, things we didn't like from that county origination?
You mean rezone everybody's property?
No, no, no. What I'm saying to you is, we, I don't know what previous councils have done, but what I'm suggesting is, it seems to me that some of the things that the, that we inherited from the county are still in place, which is 12 years ago. Have we ever done a complete review, or did we do a complete review, of all, everything? Because we have changed some things, haven't we? We're different than, than the county.
We, we certainly have, and we've been changing things since 2000. Some of the things, if you change, there is compensatory situations, so you want to be careful in what you do. However, with that being said, you want to, when thinking about ordinances and thinking about doing changes, you want to be careful what vehicle you place the change in. For example, if city council was only interested in linear changes, then I would suggest you change the land development code, but any place that has it vested in the land development code would be permitted by right.
If they're vested.
So then you have that problem. So that's where you want to have a regulatory ordinance with the operational aspects that's not part of land use.
Why can't we change it?
Why can't you change the actual...
Why can't we adopt our own categories and not allow that particular use?
There are property rights associated with what people have been conferred, not just by council, but people that are predecessors from council.
Okay. Okay? All right, and, and Martha, what we have?
Yeah, well, you know, there's been a lot of talk that I'm just a mean, uncompassionate person, because I don't like homeless shelters, and that's, I have been serving homeless people since I was a kid, and I wrote something, because I think we need the right fit for our city, and that's why I'm for this ordinance, okay? Because I think it will help us get there. All right. So I'll make it real quick. When I was a kid, my grandparents used to tell me stories of the Depression. I don't know if anybody here remembers that, because we were all so young in Benita Springs, and beautiful, but at the dinner table, they'd tell me that, you know, they'd bring in men who had lost their jobs and traveled by the train, and there were, we called them hobos, and they had hobo camps, and they'd feed them a good dinner, Grandma'd make a good dinner on a plate, on her best china, and feed that man, because she said they'd have, they'd have a family somewhere, and they'd want to know that somebody was taking care of them. And my grandpa'd give them a shirt, and maybe he'd help them find a job sweeping down at the mill where he worked. So I admired them for their charity, and they provided a very good example for me. But I also, and through those years, the first fundraiser I flew, I, I threw in Benita Springs was for St. Matthew's House. St. Matthew's House might not know that, but I did, okay? My husband and I brought truckloads, and he can attest to it, truckloads of food to St. Matthew's House when they had their storefront. I helped the Cafe Alive. I used to cook meals for people and serve it in the Bowery in Alphabet City in Lower Manhattan. People who are from up there would know what I mean. I used to bring food to the Woods people in Naples. I kept the mentally ill in homes when they were about to lose them. I'm, I'm housing a person who lost her home to foreclosure right now, okay? So all the people are bashing me, thinking that I don't care about people, you're wrong. And that's my point here, is that it hurts me, it pains me to see people in my city pitted against one another, because we are caring people, we're giving people, we're loving people in Benita Springs. And I think that this ordinance, hopefully, will help us find a path, both legally and also emotionally, that the people in Imperial Harbor, the people in Cedar Creek, the people in Spanish Wells, the people in my neighborhood, Don Salter out there, don't have to worry that they're going to have people imported here from somewhere else. We want to take care of our people here. We do that with the fine work of the Assistance Office, the Rotary, the Lions Club, the Literacy Council, let's name them all, you know, the food banks, we help people all the time, and I bet you, you've got a bunch of volunteers in this room that help people one way or another during the course of a week. They go out and volunteer somewhere and help a person. I've learned something along the way. My sister's lived in a group home for 20 years, and I bought her a house, so she's not homeless. But one of the most successful things, and I sent Diane Lynn, our city clerk, some information about what kind of housing is the most effective, most cost-efficient, and most, least impactful to a community, and that's something called supportive housing. We, our rental permit sort of follows that, when you're talking about the Fair Housing Act, right? Our rental permit says, you're not allowed to have more than four unrelated people in a residence, you have to have 70 square feet for the first person living there, and 50 for the next, and, okay, if we follow our rental permit guidelines, sort of, you know, and say, you can have, and we can have a group home, it follows the Fair Housing Act, you can have St. Matthew's, or Salvation Army, whoever you are out there, you want to come to Benita Springs, work with us, okay? Prove to us you care about our community by not upsetting our caring neighbors who are worried about their investment. Bring us a group home, show us that you can get those people, because you can also screen people to a group home. You get the mamas in a group home, you can get the people who have a mental problem in a group home, you get the developmentally disabled people in a group home, you can have them in the places where they're case managed, as Ms. Kilgannon, one of our charter, charter incorporation members, said, and you can get them the best care that way. They're more closely individual, you know, individual help that way, they can get connected to the services they need. If we, I'm sorry, but a, a group home that's larger than like four people who are unrelated to me is nuts in this town. We don't have the social network for, you know, sending people to the kind of services they have in Fort Myers. If we want to bring those here and get the federal offices here and all that kind of stuff, cool, but I just think the perfect fit for Benita Springs, and I'm surprised to learn this, you know what, John Mathis taught me this today.
Good, and you're going to wrap this up, right?
I am, sir.
Okay, good, good.
I am, sir, but I think it's important.
Good.
I believe for a long time, because in my neighborhood, we've had a group home for 25 years, there's been one incident. Who knew? You know? I know about it. But I, when I talked to Mr. Mathis on the phone, he goes, "We have three." I said, "Really? Who knew?" That point is, who knew? Because they're not having a heavy impact on your neighborhood. So to have a group home that's got a manager, the, the administrative staff, as Ms. Kilgannon said, is the best way to go, and the homeless advocates around the country are asking to close down the large shelters so that people can get individualized care that way. And I think if we're a caring community, that's what we'd want to do.
Okay.
That's it, Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. The, the motion, if someone wants to make this motion, is going to be to send this particular ordinance, and this ordinance is just, just, just a blank, it's a template of sorts, to the LPA to develop a series of workshops with, with, with the staff and with the community, have a community conversation there, and see if we can iron out a lot of these points. Is that, is that correct? We have a motion to the effect, we have a second to that effect. Staff, do you have any questions about that? Pretty much got you working ours. That's fun, wasn't it? Wasn't it fun? Okay. Roll.
May I make a comment?
Oh, I'm...
No, no, no worries, no worries. I just, I still have not seen any statistics that support the need of a St. Matthew's House or any other homeless shelter here. I don't, I don't want to look...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to ask you, please, please, I understand your feelings on this, we all do, but go ahead and continue.
So I don't want to lose sight of that fact. Let's not put the horse before the cart here. Where is the need? I have yet to see the need, okay? And specifically here, 1,000 feet from a school? Or, I understand, are you kidding me? 1,000 feet? That's like a two-minute run, a four-minute jog, or probably a six-minute walk, okay? Give me a break. This needs a lot of work.
It does it that, it does it that. Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slackta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Oh.
Councilman McIntosh?
Okay, uh, council, or staff, you got everything you need? Right? Good. Everyone, we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, let you get your thoughts together there, 10-minute break.